One.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. My name is Catherine Halpern. I'm Chair of the Planning Board of the Town of Chatham. And this meeting is being conducted by remote participation only. And I will note that the meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly hereafter for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. Also, I do need to ask if anyone is recording the meeting. It's all right to record the meeting, but you do need to notify us. I'll give you a few seconds in case you're muted. So I'll just go through a few points about our remote participation procedure, and we are meeting by remote participation only tonight. This meeting of the Chatham Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation in accordance with Section twenty of Chapter twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, and shall afford adequate alternative means of public access via Microsoft Teams or by calling the phone number one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero. That's one five zero eight nine four five four four one zero. And the conference ID number is two zero four three two two four six pound. That's two zero four three two two four four six pound. And as I mentioned, you may also join the meeting using Microsoft Teams by using the link that's in the agenda posted on the town website. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access. And as I mentioned, we'll post a record of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. And just a point that if you are connected by phone and if you become muted, please press star six on your phone. And before we go through more points about our vote participation procedure, I'll mention that we do need to keep it to just one speaker at a time for the clarity of the broadcast, and that'll be the speaker recognized by the chair. If you are not speaking, would you kindly mute your microphone, whether by phone or by computer? And please disable your video if you're connected by computer, with the exception of planning board members. Please keep your videos live, but please do mute your microphones unless you're speaking. So some of our remote participation procedures, to just review them, we'll start with a roll call of all planning board members. When a non-board member or citizen, if you are recognized by the chair to speak, would you kindly repeat your last name? And if you're connected by phone, please repeat the last four digits of your phone number. We just need to be able to clearly identify all speakers during the call, during the meeting. And after an agenda has been discussed by the planning board, I will request comments from non-board members, from citizens, and when recognized by the chair, please feel free to speak. All votes that are taken tonight by the planning board will be done by roll call vote, and at the end of the meeting, we'll close with a verbal confirmation of adjournment, and we'll also note the time of adjournment. So let's start with our roll call of planning board members. I'll start with the Vice Chair, Art Spru.
Art Spru, present.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, present.
Thank you. Bob Wirtz, present.
Bob Wirtz, after, present.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, present.
Roger Griffin.
Roger Griffin, present.
Thank you. And this is Catherine Halpern, also present, or is not able to join us tonight. And then before we begin, I'll just ask if any planning board members need to recuse themselves from any matters on tonight's agenda.
This is Bob Dubus. I have to excuse myself on two twenty-nine, two seventy-nine Crow Road.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Dubus. All right, so we'll move to our first agenda item, and those are the minutes from the January twenty-fourth meeting. I will ask if anyone has any corrections or additions or amendments to the January twenty-fourth meeting minutes. There being none, may I have a motion to approve the January twenty-fourth minutes? Bob Wirtz after, did you make a motion? I think you're on mute.
So moved, yes.
Can I have a second?
Bob Dubus will second.
Thank you. So let's do a roll call. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wirtz after.
Bob Wirtz after, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, approve.
And Roger Griffin. I think you're muted, Roger.
Yes, I was. Roger Griffin approved. Sorry about that.
And this is Catherine, and of course, I'll abstain because I was not able to attend the January twenty-fourth meeting, but we have approved the minutes. So the next item on our agenda is a release of covenant bond statement of conditions, and this is for two seventy-nine Crow Road. And I understand from Ally that the applicant has requested a continuance of this matter to our March fourteenth meeting. And Ally, is that correct? Is that the date they want?
March fourteenth, that's correct.
Okay, so being that the applicant has requested this, may I have, we will need to take a vote, may I have a motion to continue this matter to the March fourteenth meeting?
Tom Gagin, so moved.
Thank you, Tom. May I have a second?
Bob Wirtz after, seconds.
Thank you. So let's do our roll call. Art Spru.
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin.
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wirtz after.
Bob Wirtz after, approve.
Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, abstain.
Okay. That's right. Thank you. Sorry. And Roger.
Yep, Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we continue this matter to March fourteenth. Next item on our agenda is a formal site plan review for thirty Post Office Lane, North Chatham Landscaping. And we did do the preliminary site plan review for this matter. Do I have someone who is presenting for thirty Post Office Lane?
Yes, David Clark here from Clark Engineering. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Also, present is Bill Litchfield to lend assistance if needed. So we were before you last year for preliminary on this, and overall, the project was accepted by the board with some suggestions. So we're back before you with the final plan. It's pretty much the same what you saw, just refined some of the site changes. So notably, in front of the residential portion of the building, while we're proposing to put back four parking spaces that was removed about fifteen or sixteen years ago. Included in those four spaces is one ADA compliant space with the loading zone, and that will get somebody to the front door of the building. Right now, there's no dedicated parking spaces for the residential portion of the building, so we're proposing a new driveway to go along the southerly property line with the two required spaces for the apartment. One, parallel to the traveled way, and the second one up close to the building, and then a turning area to get the tenants back out to the street. For this new gravel driveway, we're proposing a catchment, which is just a DB nine gutter inlet, which will capture the storm water. The driveway would be graded such a way that it would be pitched towards Post Office Lane, so we'll pick up the storm water with the gutter inlet, and then culvert will transport it to the leach basin. Currently, there's no drainage on the site. All storm water sheet flows out onto Post Office Lane. It's been like that since the buildings were built. So we're improving the situation by two catch basins, leaching catch basins. There's a second one on the, towards the north side of the property. Currently, there is a fenced-off area north of the building. The, that area will now be used for storage of equipment for the landscape business. That's where we'll also keep the dumpster. And the dumpster should be not visible from the street. The fence is, I think, about five feet high. And if needed, we would add a couple of sections of two-foot-wide lattice to further screen it if it's, if it, if it is an issue. No lighting is proposed, no new lighting other than a light for the business sign out on a little island by the street. All the existing lighting on the building will remain. There is one light pole that's in the lawn area that will just move on closer to the new walkway to the deck to the residential unit. That's it as far as the changes to the site. As far as the use, Ally did point out there was discrepancy on the site plan. We're showing a retail use. At this point, we're not proposing any retail use. The first floor of that hill portion of the building will be the offices for the landscape business. So the parking calculations are the same. It's one space for a hundred and fifty square feet. So the parking calculation won't change. Bob Dunkinson reviewed the drainage. He did point out that there was a discrepancy in the labeling of the leach bits. It calls it out as a six by four with four feet of stone. The drainage calculations call out a six by six with four feet of stone, and also the catch basin detail on the site plan shows a thousand-gallon leach, leaching basin, which is a six-foot-deep basin. So I can easily revise the plan to correct both the parking calculation and the, the description of the leaching structures. Be happy to answer any questions?
Okay, great. Thank you, Dave. This is Catherine. I'll just go through, before we go through the board, I'll just go through a few of the points on the staff report, and also, we did get comments from Bob Dunkinson. I think those came in today, so let me just try to find those. One moment. So I'll read the comments from, the memo from Bob Dunkinson. I reviewed the storm water runoff drainage calculations and site plan sheet one of one, dated December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, prepared by Clark Engineering for thirty Post Office Lane. Point one, as the proposed parking area is gravel, I recommend the proposed leaching catch basins be preceded by solid catch basins to minimize the chance of fine gravel being introduced into the leaching catch basins. Point two, based on review of the above information, the drainage systems, if installed as shown on the plan and properly maintained, should provide adequate capacity based on soil conditions and proposed structure sizing. And point three, rather than in-ground structure, excuse me, for roof runoff consideration, considerations should be given to a rain garden as a landscape amenity. So those are points from Bob Dunkinson. Ally notes, as Mr. Clark kind of summarized some of our comments from the preliminary review, we had a question about whether there would actually be retail sales on the site. There's, and the parking calculations do allow for the retail traffic, although there's not actually a retail shop as we understand it, but more that people could come in and make a purchase from the landscape company. There will be no greenhouses on site. We've reviewed the drainage calculations. Also, we had a question from the preliminary about the entrance exit onto Depot Road, and there is no proposed entrance or exit onto Depot Road. Sinage and lighting is proposed on the western property line adjacent to Post Office Lane. And then also, we had a question about the dumpster, which I think Mr. Clark has answered about what their plans are. We do, and let's see. Let me see if there's any other external correspondence that I should read. All right. Central, so I'm just going to read the referral correspondence briefly. Central permit coordinator, applicant will be required to seek approval from HBDC for any signage. The proposed stairway and proposed fencing, no filing with the zoning board of appeals is required. We have not received a response from the fire department to date. From the health department, I have reviewed the plans proposed for the renovation at this property to convert the space into a landscaping business. The property is currently connected to municipal sewer. Additional sewer flow may be required for the proposed business. I have no concerns regarding the project at this time. Department of Public Works, the property is on town sewer, and will have to apply for a change in use and additional flow for the retail area. They are currently approved for three hundred and thirty GPD for three bedrooms. And Conservation Commission, proposed work is outside the Conservation Commission jurisdiction. So with that being summarized, let's go through the board and get comments and questions from Mr. Clark.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Bill Litchfield, if I could very briefly.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Please go ahead.
That's all right. Just to amplify and clarify something that David Clark said, there will be minimal retail use. Ally has in her electronic file a photograph from half a century ago of what the property was originally. It was a garden shop, and we're not proposing to have a garden shop per se, but I just wanted to clarify that the parking calculation is sufficient for the minimal retail use that we'll be having. Somebody may come in and want to buy an azalea or a rhododendron or whatever else that's on site or that Mr. Eldridge brings to the site. So technically, that might be construed as retail, it's a small point. Ally did have one question about the fence height. There was a discrepancy. The eight foot was an error. It will be not higher than six feet, the fence along Depot, to enclose the equipment storage area. As for a greenhouse, we would very much like one, but the short answer is there isn't room on the property, so there can't be a greenhouse without further relief, so we're not proposing that. And finally, just to clarify one other matter, we will be in front of HBDC for the reconfigured stairway on the south side of the property this Wednesday. We'll be going back in the future to HBDC for any signage. So just wanted to clarify those few points, and I thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. So Art Spru, do you have questions or comments for Mr. Clark or Mr. Litchfield?
Thank you, Catherine. This is Art Spru. Just another clarification question. I think Ally brought it up in the front. The civil plan identifies three bedrooms. There was a sketch that showed the upper level with just two bedrooms, and then I see statements over here that by community development, that there was only two-bedroom apartment on record. So I just think, I don't think we, it affects our site plan per se. It doesn't affect parking, but from a wastewater perspective, if you only have two, that's all that you would need to apply for. So a clarification on that. And then when you do bring the plans back, just clarify whether it's going to be two bedrooms or three bedrooms.
Okay, great. Thank you, Arthur.
Couple other things, too.
Go ahead.
There is, there's, between the civil plan and landscape plan, I was looking at different things. I went out and took a look at the site. When the site driveway was introduced in here, there's a significant number of trees along the edge there. Now, I understand that the landscape team is coming in and putting in, but I think those should be identified, and I noted that they're being removed. I counted a neighborhood of eight maple trees in that area, six to twelve inches, and six Leyland cypress that are between four inches and ten inches. So again, I don't see any issues associated with this site with doing what you're proposing to do. There's a stockade fence there. There's plenty of privacy, and you're doing significant landscaping to alter this, but I think it's appropriate since all of these are being impacted. They weren't in the preliminary because the drive was not introduced then, so I think they need to be identified and noted as to be removed. Site lighting, the two lights that are on the poles, and then I think there's five on the buildings, cutoff designs is what we're usually asked for. And I think the only thing that I would like to see is when you take a look, and you may want to, David, you may want to coordinate with landscaper on this. They have some, some of the types of trees and shrubs that are going to be out at each one of the entrance exit points, and I'm concerned about some obstructions, especially on a driveway when you take a look at the Leyland, I think it's arborivides that they're putting in there, that are toward the south. Those are all, those may be obstruct some views on there, and same thing on the right, there may be some cases on there. Take a look and coordinate with the landscaper just so that those are not going to be obstructed in the line of sight associated with a vehicle that is going to be driving. When I took a look at this, this plan is somewhat deceiving. It's one inch equals ten feet, so a vehicle is going to extend back quite a bit with someone sitting in the front seat, so that they're going to be back further than where those plants, plants are. That's all I have for right now, Catherine.
All right. Thank you, Arthur. Tom Gagin.
Thank you, Tom Gagin. May I speak to Bill Litchfield for a second?
Absolutely. Please go ahead.
Bill?
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the application. Is the owner's name Darby Zurich?
No, Edson Eldridge of North Chatham, North Chatham Landscaping.
Once again, Edward?
Edson, E.D.S.O.N., Eldridge with an E.
Yeah, because the application has a different name on it.
I, I don't have it in front of me, and I diverted. David may have come.
The application should have Pelletier as the trustees. If you, I think you just said Darby. I think that's another application that's further down the agenda.
Yeah, that's for twelve eighteen.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. I do have some, I do have some questions, actually, a question and a safety issue that I'd like to address very quickly. My question is, are the garage doors going to remain in place? My question is, are the garage doors going to remain in place?
Yes.
Okay, and when I went out for my site walk, I noticed to the north facing Depot Road where the service, gas service comes into the building. Just in the area where they're talking about the proposed equipment storage area. There's equipment there now of various types and even a boat. But I was wondering if it would make sense to have some balustrade or protection for the gas meter against that building, particularly if there's going to be equipment moving in and out of that storage area. Yeah, where the, where the hand is right now against the building. The gas meters are there and they certainly don't seem to be protected from anyone accidentally bumping into them. I get just a comment.
It's noted, I will, we will discuss that with the applicant. I'm sure there wouldn't be an issue putting a couple of bollards next to them, next to the meter for that added protection.
Thank you, and if, who would be responsible for getting me the information on the owner's name?
It's on the application.
Okay, so I need to go through my paperwork and look at the correct page, is that right? Okay, thank you, that's all I have for comments.
Tom, this is Catherine, it looks like RCP Family Realty Trust is listed as the owner.
Madam Chairman, Bill Litchfield, to clarify, Mr. and Mrs. Pelletier are the trustees of the trust which currently owns the property. Mr. Eldridge is the agreed vendee, which is to say he's going to buy the property as soon as we finish with planning board site review.
Okay. All right.
Tom Gagin, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Litchfield. All right, any other questions, Tom, are you okay?
Tom Gagin is fine, thank you.
Thank you, so Bob Wertschafter, questions, comments for Mr. Litchfield or Mr. Clark or both?
Catherine, I don't have any, thank you.
Right, thank you, Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus, I've known that property all my life. I rode my bicycle to the post office by it. I think this is probably one of the more favorable endings to this property.
Great, thank you, Bob. Roger Griffin?
No, I don't have any, I don't have any, I don't have any questions. And I got a comment, I thought McCully's planting plan was great. We very rarely see something that specific, it was a great job, but anyway, no questions.
All right, great. Art Spru, I see your hand is up.
Yes, there was one other thing I just wanted to clarify. The, this is again, a clarification between the civil plan and the, the landscape plan. In the front of the building, which is the, the parking space right next to where the handicap is. It's got a four on it, all right? To the right of that, there is a tree there, it's a rather large tree. It shows it to remain here on the civil plans, but the landscape plans show it not being there anymore. So I think you just need to clarify that, that's, that's a pretty large tree. And if you're going to take it down. The, you know, there should be clarified whether that is or isn't going to be there.
Okay, thank you, Arthur. Arthur, this is Catherine, so I just want to ask you, we could add conditions, of course, a couple, some of the points that you've brought up that they should note on the plans would
Okay.
Removed, which is something standard that we ask for.
Okay.
So we could add that as a condition. And I'm going to add, also, we often have a standard condition about the lighting being downcast. And we could add that standard condition. Was there anything else you brought up that you feel should be?
I think just clarify which, which trees are being removed and which are to remain, especially that large one. I think the one that's, the last one I pointed out is about twenty-four inches. So it's a, it's a rather large tree, those are two. And then I support Bob Duncanson's comment about catch basins. The Rangardon is a separate issue, but certainly, certainly to catch basins before the infiltrators is, is a good practice to do.
Did you want to add the condition or just that we ask that Mr. Clark follow Mr. Duncanson's recommendations?
I, I, I don't think catch basins are warranted here. We did consider it, but it's a lot of excavations that's got to go on to, in order to get the leach pits in. And I think we've, we've put in more drainage than what's required. But as a compromise, I'd, I'd be willing to look at putting in the DB nine gutter inlets. And that would give a catchment where some, some suspended solids would be able to settle out to put in a five-foot diameter leach pit. In addition to what's on the plan, is really going to tear up the whole yard and will probably be looking at additional paving, which, which I don't think was, was anticipated. But similar to the, the catchment that's proposed for the driveway, it would be a DB nine gutter inlet. Like, we could make them with a four-foot sump so, so that it does. There's a, a catchment area below the outlet pipe that provides the same level of treatment for the most part.
Catherine, that, that's fine for me. I, I think that the important thing is the infiltrators that are being proposed. That, that's the most important critical thing. One, granted, it could, could go to the extent of having catch basins, but David's suggestion is certainly appropriate for here. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Arthur, and thank you, David. So if there's no other comments from the board, before I take comments from the public, I just want to look at the conditions that staff has proposed. And we want to add a couple of conditions, just that the trees that are to be removed are clearly designated on the plans, that we have some record of that. And also just add our standard condition about all lighting is downward cast and, and is, the lighting is contained on the property, our standard condition, so we add that. We also have a condition proposed by staff that we request a performance bond. And the applicant has submitted a cost estimate for site improvement. The total of that cost estimate is twenty-eight thousand one hundred. We usually would ask for a performance bond of something less than the total. And I will ask for Mr. Dubus's input. I'm going to suggest that, as we generally do, we, with a performance bond, we like to cover the really essential things. At least, so I'll suggest something close to twenty thousand. But I'd like to hear Bob Dubus's comments on what a good amount for the performance bond would be.
Bob Dubus here, well, the most important thing is, that's going in the ground is the drainage, which should be one of the first things. And then the, the plantings that are, the new plantings in the driveway here. I, I think you're pretty on the ball with the twenty thousand. But what I would do is make note that once the drainage is in, and the driveway is, is lined out, that they probably could come back and get half their money back.
Okay.
That's the major expense.
So so the drainage is twelve thousand five hundred, the driveway is six thousand. So we're getting up to like eighteen thousand five hundred. And then you, you feel the landscaping should be covered, or at least part of it?
That's the last thing to put in, he is a landscaper, I don't doubt that he's going to put it in, but, but that once the drainage is in and the driveway is in, the only thing left is the landscaping. So I would, like I said, I would give him, once he puts the, gets the driveway edged out and flattened, probably not stoned. Be, could come back and get half the money back.
Okay, do you think twenty thousand is enough, Bob?
Yeah, considering there's only eight thousand left over, they're going to eat that up in stone and miscellaneous stuff.
All right. So I'm going to ask if other board members have comments about the amount of the performance bond. What we're suggesting is twenty thousand and have to be returned upon completion of the drainage, is that right, Bob?
No, no, what I said was, once the drainage in, and rough out the driveway on the westerly side, I think it is, or south westerly side. They could come back and get half their money back.
Okay, sorry. Okay, sounds good.
Keep ten until they're, till they're done.
Completely done. Any other comments or input about the amount and the arrangement for the performance bond? From other board members?
Catherine, this is Art, Bob's suggestion is fine with me.
Okay, perfect, great. So before we go to vote, I will ask if there's any members of the public who'd like to make any comments about this site plan application. I don't see any hands raised, I'll just give people a minute in case they're muted. Hold on. All right, I don't see any hands raised. So what I'm going to suggest, based on the board's comments, is that we take a vote to approve this site plan with conditions and that we will go with the conditions that staff has proposed, our three standard conditions. The amount of the performance bond would be twenty thousand with fifty percent to be reimbursed upon completion of the drainage and the, at least the rough installation of the driveway. And then we want to add, again, two standard conditions that we often add, one about all lighting being downward cast and not leaving the property and that the trees to be removed are identified on the plans. So if that's acceptable to the board, and there's no further discussion, I'd ask for a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gagin.
I, I would like to ask for consideration of some protection for that gas meter against the building because there'll be equipment moving back and forth in that storage area.
All right. So do you want to propose that as an additional condition?
Yes, Tom Gagin, I think that Dave Clark talked about putting some protection, a balustrade in that area. I'm not looking for a design, but just something that would secure that meter from being dislodged from the building.
All right, so we're adding three conditions then. All right, protection for the gas meter, downward cast lighting and identification of trees to be removed. All right, and Ally, you had your hand raised?
Yep, I think there was one more condition to add, the DB nine gutter inlet that we were talking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I didn't recall that, but that's fine. Thank you, Ally. Any other conditions that, that we need to add? The condition is here, as stated, the dumpster located on the site shall be enclosed. I think that was left as an open issue when Mr. Clark did the presentation. Is the board wanting the dumpster to be enclosed?
Well, it's going to be behind the fence.
Right.
So it, in essence, will be enclosed, it will be in the storage area, so it won't be visible from the street.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Tom Gagin, I agree with David. It would be very hard pressed, driving down Depot Road with that fencing in place. I know there's some trees going to be removed from the outside of the fence. But I was having a little bit of difficulty looking over the fence. And I'm above average in height from the average bear. So I can't see that, that dumpster, particularly the one that they have in there now for some cleaning that's taking place. Doesn't seem to be anything that is site worthy of further protection, that's just my view.
All right, great. All right, so again, what I'll propose is if someone would like to make, to make a motion to approve the site plan with conditions, and the conditions will be the three as included on the staff report. And the amount of the performance bond we've agreed will be
Catherine, you froze.
Yep, I think she froze. So we, I'll just finish our sentence, we agreed that the performance bond would be twenty thousand. Oh, she's back.
The internet, yeah, the internet occasionally goes out here. If it goes out for more than a few seconds, I'll dial in. So the three conditions as stated, amount of the performance bond, we've agreed to twenty thousand dollars. I mean, the four conditions as stated, I'm sorry, and then we're adding four conditions which are, one is about the trees to be removed should be identified. Another is about the downward cast lighting, again, a standard condition. We want protection for the gas meter and then the DV, is it DV nine to be installed?
Yes.
Okay, so would someone like to make a motion that we approve the site plan?
Make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Roger.
Bob Dubus will second it.
Great, so let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wertschafter?
Bob Wertschafter, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin approves.
And this Catherine Halpern, I also approve that we approve the site plan with the eight conditions as stated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark and Mr. Litchfield.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Did we send a letter to the to the board, the historic board or anything on, on this project yet?
I'm going to check in with Ally about that.
Okay, thank you.
I would ask if Mr. Litchfield, Attorney Litchfield is still on the call, I'm not sure if they have gone to historic yet.
Madam Chairman, I am here, Bill Litchfield. We are going to HBDC this Wednesday, the sixteenth, for the change in the stairway on the south side of the building. We are not going to them yet for signs because we haven't designed them. But if, if Ally through, through the chair, if you would like to speak with me tomorrow, be happy to do so. Or alternatively, if you simply want to communicate to HBDC that your board has approved the site plan, that's fine as well.
Mr. Litchfield, I didn't know if you wanted a letter or just a verbal would be okay.
Madam Chairman, Bill Litchfield, whatever the, the board and Ally are willing to do will be appreciated.
Okay, thank you, we can provide a letter.
Either that or Ally, Ally and, or Catherine, you can write one up and send it.
Yes, yes.
Oops, thank you.
Yes, we usually send, I think it's more like a short memo. And we can, we can certainly do that. Thanks, Bob. All right, let's move on to our next agenda item. And this is an amended site plan review. This is for twelve eighteen Main Street. And this is for a proposed change of use from a retail market. This used to be Chatham Organic Market. And now the proposed use will be a hair salon and spa, massage and so on. And do I have a presenter for this matter connected?
Yes, I'm here, Samantha Welch.
Hello, how are you, Samantha?
Good, how are you?
Good, so please go ahead.
Okay, so I'm proposing, I'm currently at twelve twenty-three Main Street. And I'm proposing a change of use to twelve eighteen Main Street, which is and I'm proposing a change of use to twelve eighteen Main Street, which is previously the health market. It's going to be the first floor salon, massage, and that's really it. Upstairs is gonna remain the same, you know, Darby has apartments, which she's here as well, if, if there's any questions for her.
All right, so the apartments on the second floor will remain as is.
Yes.
The first floor, you'll be changing from, I mean, it's actually been vacant for a while, but before that, it was an organic market.
Yes.
And changing to a hair salon. And let's see. The staff report is pretty complete, I mean, it looks like the parking requirement is met. There's there's anything of, why don't I go through the referral responses before we go through the board question? So central permit coordinator, personal and household services are an allowed use in the GB three zoning district. No filing with the zoning board of appeals is required. Approval from the Historic Business District Commission will be required for any proposed signage or any exterior changes to the structure. From the fire department, we've not received a response, health department. This property is currently connected to the Chatham Municipal Sewer System and is approved for a total of five fifty GPD for the five bedrooms on the second floor, those are the apartments. The proposal should add a five-chair hair salon, which will add five hundred GPT sewer flow to the property and will require approval of additional flow from the sewer department, so you do need that. Department of Public Works, they're going to have to submit an application to increase the sewer flow for this location from Conservation Commission. As proposed, there is no modification in the footprint or further encroachment of the wetland and will not require Conservation Department approval. Principal Projects and Operations Administrator, please note that twelve eighteen Main Street in relation to the Chatham Municipal Airport is beyond the runway protection zone, RPZ, and not under airport approaches. Therefore, it is outside any areas of concern related to the airport. So let's go through and see if there are any other questions and comments from board members for Samantha or for Darby. Art Spru.
Thank you, Catherine, this is Art Spru, I have a few questions for clarification. The entrances to this, to the salon, are they the current entrances that I observed when I was out there? One from the front and one from the, from the side, is, is that? There also could be a third one all the way down toward the rear. So I just want a clarification of where the access is to the salon.
I believe it would be the one directly on twenty-eight.
That's the only one?
Well, there's, there's two on twenty-eight, there's one that used to be in front of New England Pizza, then there's one in front of the Natural Health Food Market, and then there's the street right before it, which I don't have off the top of my head, there's access from behind that.
Yeah, okay, so, but you're gonna be, all of those are going to be used as access points to the salon, is that correct?
I would say the main one, the front one, from twenty-eight.
Okay, all right. There is a note that, that you're putting a handicap ramp in, is that the ramp that's gonna go into the front? Because there's, it doesn't indicate where this proposed.
It's the same ramp there, it's just gonna be brought up to code.
Okay. The other thing is, when I took a look at your floor plan, when I walked around the building there, you're showing a rear bathroom?
So there is currently a rear bathroom there. What's gonna be back there is actually just a kitchen, it's not going to be a full kitchen, it's gonna actually be a color area to, for processing and mixing color and whatnot, so it's gonna have a sink.
Okay, the, the only reason I'm bringing it up is because at that rear corner there where that bathroom is shown, that's a stairway that goes up, I think that's the second means of egress for all the bedrooms upstairs, or the apartments upstairs, so, so that it's probably just not shown the way it's, it exists out there from your foot, floor plan here.
From mine, yeah, probably.
Yeah, because you're not removing that stairway, correct?
No, I'm not moving, I'm not actually doing any structural changes.
Yeah. Okay, all right, thank you. The other thing I observed when I was out there, the site plan really isn't quite reflective of what I see out there. There's fourteen spaces that are noted on there, there's supposed to be lawn spaces, those really don't exist. That whole area back there is unusual dumps of soil materials out there, there's no way that you could possibly put the fourteen vehicles that are shown on there. So that, if that area is going to be used for parking and it's gonna count, then that's gonna have to be made into usable spaces.
Those aren't going to be used, I think the idea is only to use the ones right in front of what would be the porch there.
Well, the calculations that are shown here require twenty-four spaces for use, that means you're gonna have to count the ones in the back too. So the only way they can be spaces is if they exist.
Okay, maybe Darby can speak to that.
Darby, go ahead, this is Catherine. If you have comments.
Darby, you might be muted, you have to unmute yourself if you wanna speak.
I see her there.
Yes, it looks like you're muted, this is Catherine. You need to unmute yourself and well, I'm not sure whether Darby can, she's still muted.
Yeah, I'm just was trying to reach her.
Okay.
I have a few more questions that could relate to Darby too. When we had the applicant come in for reuse of the New England House of Pizza building there, we asked if there was going to be a, an agreement for use of exit across each of the properties, and the answer to that was on this property here, twelve, twelve eighteen, the answer was no. Are you asking, are you gonna ask for getting easement for access, cross, cross tra- traffic access to the adjacent?
I think Darby is here now.
Hi there.
Hi Darby.
I am here now, basically because we always kept this graded and cleared out when we had the store open, this back area along the back of the building, and that would be, we will clear that back out again and, and stone it, and it'll be fine for parking.
If, if you grade it out and stone it, yes, I agree.
That's what it was always, but the last couple of years, with not having tenants and not wanting to just rent it for a year and waiting to get a good tenant like Samantha, we haven't done, we've been, you know, cash strapped, let's say. So we've, that we've let the, the tenants have parked on the front of the building as opposed to in the back. So we will revert to the tenants parking in the rear of the building.
Okay, that, that's good, we just need to condition that, and, and are you gonna have any cross easements with the adjacent property at twelve hundred Main Street?
What do you mean, what refer?
Well, those two sites have been functioning as companion sites. When somebody drives into, you know, the former pizza place, they would drive out and exit across your exit point and the reverse could happen, so.
We have not discussed that yet, we have not discussed that with the new owners of the pizza place yet.
Okay, so the assumption should be that your site is gonna be a standalone site then, okay.
Samantha?
Yes.
Okay, the, the, you note on there parking places, but those parking places, there's no striping at all, so the, the, the parking is gonna have to be striped, we can, we can condition that for the number of spaces that you're showing there.
And the rim wouldn't need to be striped though, would it? Because if that's just gravel, that wouldn't need to be striped.
No, that, that's, that's pavement, the whole site is pavement and.
But I meant the rear of the building where the tenants would park in the very back, that's not pavement.
No, that's not, but you have spaces in the front that you'll need to have striped.
Yes.
Because right now, it's a free-for-all, people will park any place that they feel like it, and it's not a safe means of getting in and out of the site, if it's gonna be, you're gonna sustain this site as a standalone site, no, no access from any other way. The other thing I noted is there's some, some site distance related issues. Accessing out toward Belfour Lane.
Yes.
The brush on the right side there, you can't see anybody coming. That needs to be cleared.
Right, that was, that was meant to be cleared before this happened, and that was all kind of built up when they put those storm drains in on the, in the corner of the property back there.
The, the, the site has no stormwater management at all whatsoever. It actually flows to the rear, it sits in ponds and floods. One of the criteria that we have in there is that, that you can't have ponding and flooding on a piece of property. So there needs to be some sort of upgrade with some stormwater management. We just got going through that with thirty Post Office Lane, and a similar thing will have to be done in here. There has to be some sort of stormwater management before it discharges. The, the lights, all the lights, there's a lot of lights around on the building, and I think there might be some on site, they need to be cut off design, and I think I had one other item here. To do. If it's, no, if it's. Oh, and this is a question for Ally. Ally, how many handicap spaces are required on this site based on the use?
I will, I believe that there just one is required, but let me just double check really quickly.
And, and that's what I thought too, it's showing on the plan here that there's two that are off of Belfour Lane. That's about sixteen feet wide, there's no way you can fit two in there, but one would fit in there, and it needs to be striped that way with the, with the striping box next to it. But that, if there's only one, which is what I assumed, then that just needs to be striped properly. That's, that's the questions I had for right now, Catherine.
Good, okay, thank you, Arthur. Tom Gagan.
Tom Gagan, thank you, following up on Arthur's observation about the striping and the need for handicap space, what I noticed is that there's wetlands to the rear of the property, and that area has, because of the growth in that area has maintained, or has retained, a lot of trash has been caught up, so perhaps as the area is delineated into the rear with stone, and there may be some brush cleaned up there, just the general cleanup of that back area with all of that material that has come out, it all goes into wetland. You know, there's papers and there's cans and there's trash, so I don't know what the planning board can do about that, if we have the ability to ask for that area to be cleaned up. And I don't know if there's any need, if there's a trash that's blowing back there from twenty-eight or from wherever, of the restaurant or what is adjacent. Is there any way to put up perhaps a, a snow fence of some sort at the end of those gravelled parking area just to prevent that trash from going into the wetland? That would be my first question, and the only other comment other than what Arthur has pointed out on the, let me get my bearing here, on the eastern side of the building, as you walk, there's no parking in an area, but as you walk towards twenty-eight, there seems to be, and I don't know if this is dangerous or not, but there are electrical wires that are hanging off the roof, and I would just like to have someone take a look at that, whether it be the building commissioner or someone else, to see if those should be more secure, I don't know if they're blown off or if snow or anything has caused them to be pushed off the roof. But there are more than one, maybe two or three electrical wires that are hanging over the side of the building, and I'd like to have someone look into that if they could, please, thank you.
Thank you, Tom, this is Catherine, can I just ask you about the location of those wires? When you say the eastern side, so is that the side facing the parking lot and facing the other building? That would be the eastern side?
Tom, Tom Gagan, Catherine, I, I'm trying to look for the, for the rose compass. I see one pointing towards the wetlands as the north, so that would be, you're correct, that would be the western side, the non-parking lot side with those wires hanging down. So I, I changed the direction to be correct, western side, thank you.
Okay, because I just, I didn't see them on, I didn't notice them on the east, okay, thank you, Tom. Bob Wertschfter.
Yeah, my, my only questions here regarding the number of parking spaces, I really think somebody should do a recalculation. I, for, because I really don't think you need that many parking spaces, and I certainly don't like the idea in the back of having that many spaces. It looks like you need ten for the, for the apartments, and then you have six employees, I assume they're parking back there. But they're gonna be parking there during the day and some of the residents won't, so it's not clear to me that you need sixteen spaces back in the back. And I, and I'm wondering whether you really have twenty-five hundred square feet of, of area used by the the public, it, it really doesn't look like that much, it looks like there's a bunch of things that might have been counted. Anyway, I, I'm trying to, to suggest that you put, figure those things out and, and then use bigger parking spaces so that, that you have a little bit more room to park in. Each person has a little bit more room, and we don't use as much of the back there filled, you could put some more plannings and other things in there and alleviate some of the stormwater issues that have already been mentioned, that's really all I have.
Great, thank you, Bob.
Bob Dubus, I was wondering, is the building hooked up to sewer yet, or am I just looking at the?
Yes, it is, Bob, and you hooked it up.
Well, I might, I'm, my company might have, but I personally didn't. So the, so the drainage structures, I'm looking at a couple of them in the, that could be proposed for leaching areas for short-term drainage solution.
Yeah, yeah, no, we hooked up quite a few years ago when we first could, yes.
Well, thank you for that.
Yes.
Okay, Roger Griffin.
Yeah, on the, on the on the informational sheet here, it talks about a play area, but is, if we're talking five-one bedroom apartments, we, we are not talking children being the, in the building at all, so it's five-one bedroom units.
Five-one bedroom with one per, only one of the apartments has two people in it, and it's a husband and wife, it's all adults, there's no children.
Right, okay, exactly, but being a one-bedroom, so even the calculation on the parking spaces, we could be even over for ten because with.
Right, exactly, yes.
Okay, I guess the only current, okay, thank you for answering that. I guess I'm still kind of concerned about the, the, the entrance and the exit. With the one building with the one tenant not there, and in the past it was, it's a sort of a shared entrance and exit. Do we have too many entrances and exits? Is it dangerous to have so many that are unidentified? Should we be doing something even at this point to really have a primary entrance and exit? Because I know from being, you know, growing up here, even when I would go down there, I'd always go around the back and and come out of Belfor because it was the safest way to take the left. And I think, I mean, should we be doing some sort of a, I'm sorry, I mean, it's the way we did it. Should we be doing some sort of a study or something where the entrance and exit should be? Or maybe contact the tenant next door to see where we're going? Because this, when it's busy during the summer, it's going to be an issue if people are all deciding to get in and get out where whatever corner seems to be the easiest. And right now, that's where we're at. Because even across the street of the cornfield, you have no idea how many people come in the entrance. I mean, as I'm leaving. I think we can't leave it. I think that's what I'd like to see tonight. Somehow we have some sort of plan as to how we address the entrance and the exit. I think it's for everyone, for everybody's benefit. The other question I had is that building's been empty for a while. We're going to do anything, it's kind of tired looking out even outside. We could do anything to kind of give it a clean up or?
Well, we have, we just painted it in the fall. It's been painted and we just did a new roof on it also. And we just put a new furnace in. So we've been doing more. Yeah.
Okay, so outside, now where is the sign going to be? Is the signage going to be on the building or out front where it used to be? Is a sign out front in the grassy area?
I'm going to keep a sign out front, the road sign. And then I think I'm going to put one above the overhang on the porch.
Okay, with the downcast lighting and?
Yes, I believe that's there.
Okay, okay, okay. All right, but I guess Ally, how do we do something to probably help everybody out to get some sort of clarification on the the entrance and the exit? Because we seem to be kind of just stopped somehow.
So we can ask the applicant, and I think we've brought that up in past applications when the neighboring property came in. We can ask them for a cross-axis easement. And that's what Art, I think, had brought up. But because there are two different property owners, we can ask them to consider talking to one another to formally form a cross-axis agreement.
It's to both, it's to everyone, it's to their benefit as well, you know?
I also just wanted to follow up on Art's question about the number of handicap. It is correct, there is one that is required.
Thanks, Ally. And I think, Art, did you have your hand up as well? Did you want to speak?
Yeah, I think then the plan that you see before us, this was a 1994 plan. And I can understand what they were proposing to do at the time. There was an entrance-exit off of Route 28. And then there was an entrance-exit on Belfor. It provides good circulation around the back, assuming if they were going to use parking lot. I think they added the third one, which is where the handicap is because of the requirement for handicap parking. Now, you don't have to use that third area as the handicap parking spaces. It could be placed elsewhere in the main parking area. And that whole area could be avoided completely. But there's no harm in leaving it there right now because there's just not a lot of traffic on Belfor Lane to create anything. So that's the reason why I didn't really pursue it too much. They addressed the handicap parking, the ramp is going to go out that way. They satisfy the requirements. So that's my only assessment of what Roger was referring to. There's really only one, the two two main points of entrance and egress, and that's one off the main street and one on Belfor Lane.
Okay, great. And then we're proposing a cross-easement to access the more easterly exit and entrance on the property that is coordinated.
That would be up to the property owner. It's not necessary. They certainly have adequate circulation on their site. They don't need that.
Yeah, okay, good. And Tom Gagan, you have your hand raised?
Yes, Madam Chair, I forgot to ask the question. I'm looking at the plan again. And I had a note here about where the dumpster is going to be located. Have I missed that?
Let me see.
There's a dumpster on the rear of the building by the storage and the loading dock over to the left.
Okay, that little rectangle just below where it says storage?
It's to the left of that.
Okay. You see? It's indicated, it's labeled.
Yes, I see that now, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Before I I'll ask if there's anyone in the public, non-board members who have any questions or comments for Samantha or Darcy or for the board? I don't see any hands raised. So this is, my assessment is there's still quite a few open issues on this site plan. The board, I'm not sure if it's ready for approval and to add all of these things as conditions or whether we want to continue the matter and request additional information to be brought before us. It does seem to me there's quite a few open issues. Particularly stormwater management, we don't really have any information on that. And then there were a number of other things that could be added as conditions. The condition regarding lighting being downcast. The condition to clean up and the parking area in the back, the condition to stripe the parking on the easterly side of the building. So those could be added as conditions. But can I get a sense of how the board feels about proceeding on this with the information that we have? We do also need to decide upon an amount for the performance bond. And you do have an estimate of the cost of bringing the handicap ramp into compliance of $9,600. So can I get a sense of the board about how you're feeling to proceed on this? Do you feel we could approve it with conditions? Or do you feel we should continue and get more information, particularly on the stormwater management and drainage? And I see a hand raised. Is it?
It's Roger.
Roger. Hi, Roger.
Ally, we don't want to hold the tenants up either. But how can we do both? How can we accomplish what we need and not pull them up any longer than we have to to have these things done? What's the most efficient way?
So it really depends on, you know, how the board wants to proceed. This, you know, site has been there for a very long time. So if you do want to see some sort of stormwater mitigation, I would suggest continuing the application. But for these other things like striping, you know, clearing that back area for the land bank parking in the back, I think those could be handled via conditions if the board wanted to consider that. Those are my suggestions.
Okay. Yes, okay, so that makes sense. So the main issue is the drainage and stormwater management. Do we want to continue to get more information on that? I do agree, the other information that we need could be handled as conditions. So let's go through the board. Why don't we just get a sense of everyone's feeling? Art Spru, would you prefer continuing to get more information about the stormwater management?
Ally's suggestion makes sense to me. Other than the stormwater management, the rest of it could be conditioned. But the stormwater management, that could go all over the place. At the same time, they can submit an estimate for doing the graveling in the back, whatever the stormwater management is, the handicap ramp now. So it's going to add to the estimate so that we'll have a judgment just like we did with the post office lane project of what we would want to use for a bond. But I think it's important that we see all the numbers together associated with it before we set a bond. We're not sure what that would be now.
Okay.
So.
Good, okay, thank you, Arthur. Tom Gagan.
Tom Gagan, I agree with Ally and Art's evaluation. I would add to the cost estimate, there's going to be a cost estimate to the striping. I don't know how expensive that is, but I know that that's something that we're going to insist on. And that there is a cost associated with that.
Good, thank you, Tom. Bob Worchhefter.
I'm fine. I guess we really do need to do the stormwater and I would like to see that. And so I think we have to wait.
Yeah, okay. Bob Dubus.
Bob Dubus here. Listen, to expedite this whole thing, I was looking at what they have here. If we ask for $18,000 for a bond, okay, which would mean that we would have we would have between $6,000 and $8,000 to play with for the fixing of the drainage, the stoning of the parking area, the cleaning up over there. And then the striping would be contingent on having everything done. I think that would be, it's a little heavy on the bond. But I think that to expedite this so that everybody's happy, that they can get started on, time is short for these people to open a business up and have it up and running for the summertime. So that would be my suggestion. I figured that 18 would give us a good hunk of change to remedy any type of drainage in the back. And they would use up some of that in the stoning of the area and cleaning up. So I'm in favor of pulling it, going ahead, asking for a little more bond when they do have this put together halfway together. They, even everything but the backyard, they could still drop $8,000 in the kitty there for somebody else to come in and rehab it if they had to. But I'm sure that they'll take care of it. So that was my suggestion.
Okay, thank you, Bob. And I do see, Tom, your hand is up, but let me just check in with Roger. I'm just pulling the board to get everybody's opinion about whether we need to continue this and get more information or whether we could go ahead and approve it with conditions tonight. So Roger, your opinion on that?
You know, I don't know. I guess I'd be actually more comfortable with having a continuance. And I don't want to hold these people up either. But I guess they do feel whichever, I guess they continue, it would be the way to go so we could probably get some more information. But again, you know, I very much agree, at the same time, I agree with Bob. These people have to open up a business. I mean, we appreciate every business that we have in town that wants to open up. So, you know, I guess I'd be, I'd work with everyone on that. But as long as, whatever, like I said, as long as we get this thing done and get it done correctly.
Okay, and Tom Gagan. Thanks, Roger, you have your hand up. Tom, I think you're muted. We can't hear you.
Well, that's always a plus. I'd like to ask Bob Dubus a question, if I may, Madam Chair.
Please go ahead.
Bob, with what's happening construction-wise in the town, and you would know a lot more about this than I, do you have any idea of a reasonable timeframe where the applicant could actually get the stormwater engineering and the equipment in place? I ask that because I'm wondering if they would actually have to do this work prior to an occupancy permit, being able to start that business up. With the timeline you're talking about, I agree. Is there some way that we have some idea that they could or could not do that, what you were asking them to do in, say, a two-month period or a 45-day period?
Yeah, I'm listening, Tom. Yes, as long as the ground isn't frozen, they should be able to go out there and work out some numbers. And then we are getting into the season where the ground's going to be mud season so that it could be taken care of within two months.
Yeah, okay.
I agree that that would make sense. The question to the board or to Ally is if it took that period of time or perhaps with the availability of companies to come in and do that, we're going to be getting into a season where a lot of activity, outside activities taking place. Is it within the purview of this board to allow that business to actually open and not have the drainage system finished? Because we're going to be holding a bond to that aspect. So where's the play here that this board would have in allowing us to approve this tonight? Knowing that the major issue that we are concerned with as members of the board is adequate stormwater drainage.
Ally, do you want to reply to that?
Bob Dubus, let me answer that question a little bit. Like you said, you have the bonds and no matter what, you can produce some type of drainage area out of that, whether they're open or not. You just use the bond that they put up to get it done.
Well, what I'm, may I speak, Madam Chair?
Yes, please go ahead.
Tom Gagan, what I'm concerned about, Bob, is that they have a reasonable window that the applicant can start planning and doing the work to get this business online and not jeopardize that timeline. I don't know if the applicant has any better control than anyone else in town for getting a company to come and do that in a timely manner. That's really my issue. If the board is not having a difficulty with that, then I'd like to change my mind and vote to approve under the conditions that we have that bond in place and that we know that that's going to take place. The only other thing I'd like to see, which I think is a relatively easy thing to do before they open, is to do the striping and create that handicap spot. But the rest of it, I think, is doable. And given enough time, having the applicant, excuse me, know that they'd have enough time to get that engineering done and get the site in compliance with stormwater management, it now becomes less of an issue for me.
Tom, the hardest thing about the striping is the temperature. That's one of the catch-22s about the striping. So it has to be, it has to be warm enough for the paint to adhere. And that's up to the individual striper. But can it be done? Yes.
Okay. Okay, this is Catherine. I'm just going to intercede here. I think there's some diversity of opinion on the board. I think some board members, and again, we have not taken a formal vote. I was just getting a sense of the board.
Madam Chairman.
Yeah.
I think that what has just been expressed by Bob and Tom is a reasonable alternative to what I was suggesting. So I'm no longer on the other side.
Okay. I just want to make a comment. I'm not sure that we can do that. I mean, we either have to, we have to say what we need to be done in order for the business to
Talk to me tomorrow.
And those conditions that we place.
I gotta go.
Bob Dubus has to leave the meeting?
No.
No, Bob Dubus is right here.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry. So I think whatever conditions, we either need to approve it with conditions and outline all the conditions that are required in order for the business to open. I mean, I think we need to do it one way or the other. I'm not sure that we can do, that we actually can do this idea of allowing the business to open, but not everything is done yet. I'm not sure that we can do that in a sense to say that we'll allow the business to open, but the stormwater management plan will not have been brought before the board. The board will not have reviewed it and it will not be yet put into place. I've never heard of the board doing anything like that.
Madam Chairman, excuse me. What if they brought forth a plan? What if they brought forth a plan of what they intend to do?
Yeah, I think we can.
They can't have the timeline.
Yeah. Um, I think there's, there is ti, if I could, uh, put forth my opinion, I think there's time to do that. I think if we do continue and we ask for the additional information that's required, uh, in particular, the stormwater management plan, uh, there is, there should be time to do that, to get the information, and then the board could issue an approval with that information in hand, uh, and probably with conditions and with a performance bond as we've proposed. It's just that I, I think it's key information that we do not have at this time, and I'm not familiar with this idea of going ahead and issuing up, an approval without the information that we need. Um, I'm gonna ask Allie for her input on that suggestion.
So yes, if, if the board did want to, um, see stormwater, a stormwater plan, I would also suggest to do, to bring it to the board before we give approval. Um, that would be my recommendation. And then at that point, we can place a condition if there's any additional work that could be, that needed to be done, uh, with a bond, and then, you know, have the business, the business could potentially open with us keeping a bond for them to complete the work. Um, that, that's been what we've done in the past as well.
Yeah, I, I think we do need to see the, the plan. Um, so, Mr. Gagin, I do see your hand is raised again. I, I think what we just need to do is ask, we may need to continue the matter, ask for the additional information, and just do it quickly, try to do it as quickly as possible, so that we would not, you know, hold up the business from opening. Uh, but that's what I would suggest we need to do. Any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gagin, go ahead.
Yes, to clarify my position, uh, I have no objection to, uh, the board requiring that a plan, stormwater management plan, come before the board for approval. My concern was the physical entity of installing the system that would be approved. Um, I don't know if that's doable with the timeline. So to have a plan, an engineered plan come before the board, for me, is not a problem. I'm just trying to expedite what I think is a need, uh, for the applicant not to get jammed up against a timeline where they can't get someone physically in there to do the work, uh, to, uh, allow the site, the, uh, the stormwater drainage, uh, to actually physically be on the ground. That's my only concern.
Okay, great. Well, why don't we go step by step? And what I'll propose at this point, uh, it seems to me that we do need, there are some items that the board has brought up that, as we've summarized already, can be addressed by conditions, but there's the major item of the drainage and the stormwater management that we do need to see more information before we could go ahead with an approval. So I'm going to suggest that we continue this matter, that I have a motion to continue this matter, and that the applicant return as quickly as possible with the additional information that's required. Art, I see your hand is raised.
Um, yes, this is just a suggestion for the applicant, and when they speak to their engineer about this, uh, there's four downspouts in the building that discharge right to the parking lot. Um, eliminate those, uh, from discharging on the parking lot, and that's a huge amount of impervious area that you don't have to count for. Put them into some dry wells, which is a relatively inexpensive thing to do, and then just focus on the parking as the only thing that has to be dealt with for stormwater management. That'll mitigate a lot of their, um, uh, the runoff that they would have to deal with. Um, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, going ahead and, and just getting the information associated with the stormwater. We can look at that. The rest of the stuff can all be conditioned. And, uh, if they can get it done in two weeks, and we see them in the beginning of March, then that, then they should be off and running without too much trouble. That, that's my point of view.
Good, okay. I think that's a, a good plan. I'm going to, I think what we'll do is we need to, uh, have a motion to continue the matter to a particular date. Uh, so I'm gonna ask.
Catherine, I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I do think that Samantha Welsh, although I don't think it's Samantha, but, um, uh, he's raising his hand.
May I speak?
Who is there?
My name's Jo, my name is Jonathan Welch. I'm Samantha's husband.
Okay, great. Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Welsh.
Okay, okay. Uh, my, uh, I'm Samantha's husband, and I'm actually the one who's going to be doing all the interior work and some of the, some of the repairs on the exterior.
Okay.
And, you know, Samantha, her current business is directly across the street, as some of you know.
Yes.
She's, she's been in business in the town of Chatham for almost seventeen years now. And, you know, this is a very tight schedule for her. You know, her current lease is up in four months. Um, and the idea, if all was good, was as soon as that lease is up, we would be finished with the building. Um, and as you know, it's been vacant for quite a while, and, you know, there's, there's a little bit of work to be done in there, and there's lead times involved in these materials, which then is also a cost, and, you know, we're a young family. And so my idea was to get in there this week. Uh, the application for, for the building permit was submitted this morning. Um, and I was hoping to get in there this week to start some of that for her. Um, and all I can say to you is, you know, I, I do quite a bit of work with Dubus and, and, and others, and it would be very quickly that I could get someone in there to check the scope. I'd get John O'Reilly over there, the engineer, to look at that wetland and see what we need to do. And, uh, he could have something drafted for me, and within two weeks, and Dubus is usually great, they get right in there. I just wanted, I wanted to know, if possible, if, I don't care about the occupancy or allowing her to open so much, I want to just be able to get started. Um, because otherwise, it's gonna kind of put me in a, put me in a tailspin for a little bit here, you know?
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right. Um, I, I'm gonna ask Allie if there's, I mean, again, we kind of, we need to have the information complete, I think, before we can give the site plan approval. Um, I'll ask Allie if there's some way that, and Allie has raised her hand, so Allie, please go ahead. If there's some way that the interior work could be begun, that a, that the building permit for the interior work can be issued?
Yeah, we have the ramp getting replaced, you know, and, um, and, you know, put to code, you know, and, 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 for example, those parking spaces, the two handicaps there, by code, there's, you know, there's supposed to be eight feet apiece, and you're supposed to have a five-foot aisle for each handicap space. So that's more than adequate, because we're only going to have one there, uh, to the left of the main entrance. And, but I want to get all that stuff done. Um.
Yeah, we understand. Um, so I'm just, I'm asking if there's a sort of a workaround for the interior. I think it's difficult, we're in a difficult position. We do, you know, we've already considered, it's, it's hard to give the approval without all the information that's required. So I'm just gonna ask Allie if there's a possibility of the interior work being done in advance.
So I could talk with the building commissioner, um, tomorrow to see if he would be comfortable issuing the in, interior per, well, obviously, he'd have to review the permits and make sure, you know, he agrees with them. But I could talk to him tomorrow to see if he would be willing to go ahead with the interior permits, um, before the planning board, you know, issued their approval. Um, you know, technically, the planning board, we don't really, you know, discuss the interior besides the square footage calculations for parking and things like that. Um, this would, you know, obviously have to go through the building permit process to do a change of use. So I, I would obviously be more than happy to discuss with the building commissioner tomorrow for the interior changes, if the board, if that's something the board is okay with.
Yeah, and that might provide a solution. Um, uh, the interior, possibly the interior work could be begun right away. And, uh, as you said, Mr. Welsh, you can quickly get the information pulled together for, uh, that the board is requesting regarding the stormwater management and all the other issues can be handled as conditions in the site plan, and you can get it back to us as quickly as possible. And, um, and we can go ahead, but we do need to get it, to get that information. I see Mr. Gagin's hand is up again.
Tom Gagin, Madam Chair. Um, I've actually run into the situation, um, on a business level, um, and, uh, if Mr. Welsh and, and Allie can talk to the building commissioner about this, uh, if he goes into that building and does work, it's at his risk that the board isn't going to approve, uh, or the board isn't going to give permission. Um, so I don't know if there's a legal way, uh, for him to put himself, the business, the work, at risk, uh, so that he doesn't miss his timeline. So that would be one of the questions that I think Allie should have a conversation, and perhaps, uh, Mr. Welsh should be present at the meeting with the building commissioner to talk about, uh, what's, uh, what's available legally for him to enter into a building and do work, uh, with absolutely no guarantee this board's going to approve anything.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think we are at the point where I'm just gonna ask, before we go to a vote, um, if there's any comments from the public on this matter, from non-board members? Mr. Welsh, I see your hand is still raised. Is it raised from before?
It must be, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I don't see any public comment. So I'll suggest to the board that we vote, uh, to continue the matter, uh, to, so I will ask you, Mr. Welsh, if we continue this matter to ask for the additional information, in particular, about the stormwater management and drainage, um, how quickly can you get that to us? Can you get it to us? Uh, we do have a meeting scheduled February twenty-eighth that might be canceled, as I understand from Allie, but we do have a meeting scheduled. Uh, so that would be the earliest. And you, you think you can get it to us by then, or how about March fourteenth would be the next one?
I'd rather try February twenty-eighth, and if, uh, if I run into anything tomorrow, I'll, I'll certainly give you guys a call, or.
Right, so.
Shouldn't be a problem.
Yes, Allie, you have a hand raised.
Yep. Um, if for the February twentieth meeting, you could get it to us, um, a little bit beforehand, just because I have to, okay, great, because I have to review it with our uh, stormwater reviewer. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And then just by the way, when you look tomorrow, Everett Eldridge, as some of you know, is doing the permitting, and he's doing some work with us. Um, so when you do look that up, you'll see it's under, uh, I think it's Malabar Construction.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So what I'll suggest, and Mr. Welsh, we're gonna, you know, we want to support you in getting this done quickly. So what I'll suggest to the board is that, uh, if someone would like to make a motion to continue this matter to our February twenty-eighth meeting, uh, and that the applicant will provide the additional information as requested by the board, in particular, information regarding drainage and the stormwater management, uh, I'll ask for someone to make that motion.
Roger Griffin will make that motion.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
Art Spru, second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. Uh, Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. So we'll continue this matter to February twenty-eighth, and Mr. Welsh, um, pull together that additional information, and we'll get you going.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Take care.
All right. So the next item on our agenda is, um, a continuation of the public hearing about seventy-nine Forest Beach Road subdivision plan review. Again, I understand the applicant has, uh, re, requested that we continue this matter to our March fourteenth meeting. I'll just confirm with Allie that that is correct.
That is correct, yes.
Right. So may I have a motion, uh, to continue the matter of the subdivision public, uh, the definitive public hearing on the subdivision plan review for seventy-nine Forest Beach Road to continue that to our March fourteenth meeting? May I have a motion?
Bob Dubus.
All moved.
Bob Dubus, second.
All right, so let's do a roll call vote. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Uh, Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Bob Wurchafter, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, approve.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve. So that matter is continued to March fourteenth. So, uh, just a few points before we adjourn. Uh, just a reminder to the board, uh, uh, I did review the tape of the January twenty-fourth meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Bill O'Reilly.
Yes, Mr. Riley.
Now, we have, uh, one forty-six Strong Island Road.
Sorry, yes, I missed, I'm sorry.
I don't, I don't blame you for wanting to go home.
My error. I have so many notes written on my agenda. I am so sorry, Mr. Riley. Yes.
That's fine.
I have a request for a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals regarding the proposed expansion of a driveway in the Conservancy District. This is for one forty-six Strong Island Road. Um, Mr. Riley, did you want to present that to us?
Yeah, in, in the first place, uh, which is, we love Allie, uh, it's actually a decrease in the size. We're not expanding the driveway.
Yes, I noticed that.
And the, uh, so we've reduced the size of the driveway. We want it to be a paved surface, and I would point out, uh, that this design has already been approved by the Conservation Commission, uh, because of the pitch, uh, you know, because we're, the road's in the floodplain, and the house is outside the floodplain, so we have a, a pitch to the driveway that, that we'd like to keep it paved. Um, and with regard to, uh, so we've, we've reduced the size of the, the paved surface, and we've installed, we're proposing to install drainage structures, uh, within the driveway to deal with stormwater. So we think it's a reasonable, uh, method of construction, and would ask for your positive recommendations to the zoning board.
So I'm just wondering, is it, Allie, are you sharing your screen?
I am.
Yes, it's possible to outline with an arrow the current driveway and then the proposed driveway, so that we can just clearly see what's happening. And this is a departure from our normal requirement that the driveway be constructed of pervious material. So if it's possible, the little, the way the plans are shown, it's a little hard to see the current driveway and then the proposed driveway.
Sure. I'm sorry, my, my plan is a little bit blurry. Um, so I believe that this is the current driveway here, if you can see it.
Yep.
And then. I just want to make sure. Right? Um, and, yep, and then this is the proposed driveway.
All right. And the total square feet is a decrease of four hundred ninety square feet, um, going from sixteen thirty-eight square feet to eleven hundred forty-eight square feet. And the proposal is for paved, to pave the driveway, which again, we usually do require permeable material. Um, so I, I do want to go through the board. There've been some issues that have come up. So let's go through the board. Art Spru, do you have comments or questions for Mr. Riley?
Uh, yes, this is Art Spru. Um, I, I was not clear when I looked at this plan, because again, it was a very small plan. And so, uh, I took a look and just tried to confirm for myself where the flood zone was. And so I took a look and just tried to confirm for myself where the flood zone was. The, the entire site is in the flood zone is, is what I have learned. So this, all, the entire site falls underneath the Conservancy-related restrictions. That's one item. The, the elevation that, there's like three different elevations for the flood zone. One's at elevation 13, one's at 12. The actual site where the proposed house and driveway are going to be on is at flood zone elevation 11. So, but the entire site is in the flood zone. Therefore, this is a similar situation as what we had with 68 Shell. The, what is being proposed here is, is not a decrease in the driveway. The takeoff that was identified and shown on the drawing there is not the entire driveway. It is just between the 50-foot and 100-foot buffer zone. That's not the entire driveway that's proposed. Once you have put all the rest of it in there, it's, it's well over 2,000 square foot of driveway. So there is an increase in the square footage. Secondly, there is filling. There's two and a half feet of filling on the driveway, just above the entire driveway is being filled. And third, that it is being proposed as an impervious surface rather than a pervious surface. So I think we're running into the same issue here as what is at 68 Shell Drive. And one, we don't, we don't agree to allow filling and it should be pervious material and it needs to, to match the existing grade, which again, there, those are the three things that we ran into on that previous one. And I think it's the same issue that we have here. That's my, my understanding.
Thank you for that clarification. Tom Gagin?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Tom Gagin. May I ask Bill Riley a question, please?
Please go ahead.
Sure, go ahead.
Bill?
Yes.
Hi, Bill. My, my question is, the significance of the applicant to want to have a paved driveway. There may be some need that's unique. Is there any knowledge that you have for why they wish to maintain a pervious material?
As it was stated...
Impervious, excuse me.
As was stated, the Conservation Commission, because of the, the grade here as it comes up to the garage, the slab elevation of the garage is 12 and a half feet. And the, the road is 7.6. So they wanted to have paved for that purpose. And then the, the septic system is under the, is proposed to be under the driveway and they wanted to have that paved for that purpose as well.
Well, my, my question is, and maybe Bob Dubus can help me. My next door neighbor parks a boat, pretty good-sized boat in his yacht, and has put down some material that's, from my point of view, attractive. And that heavy boat has moved in and out season after season. And the Don stuff there, that is a mixture of stone and shell, hasn't moved significantly at all since the application. So has the applicant looked at other alternatives to paving?
I haven't discussed that with the applicant. And the, I think this, you know, I think with respect to Art, I don't think this is similar to 68 Shell Drive at all. And I'm, I'm not certain that there's any fill proposed here whatsoever, with the possible exception of whether it's, so fill is needed over the septic system. And I'm, I'm, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the two plans and I'm not... You know, we, we do have the ability under the bylaw to put two and a half feet of fill at the foundation of the house and then taper it off. Looking at the elevation, I think that's all they've done here.
No, I don't think so.
If you look at the driveway, you have eight and a half seconds.
This, this is Catherine. Actually, what might help to solve this is to have Arthur comment on how he sees the fill there. I think it's based on the difference in the elevation. And maybe Arthur could comment on...
Well, the, the elevation in, just bear in mind that the driveway is being moved. If you take a look at the existing plan, the driveway is being moved to the, closer toward where the building is. And it, and it, it ends at where the garage is. So there's two things that are going on there. The grade that is, the existing grade that's in front of the garage is elevation 10 today. And what is being proposed is that it goes up to elevation 12. Now, the built, the, the floor elevation of the, of the house is, is being proposed to be above the flood elevation of 13. That's fine. There are steps up that they show on the floor plan, that there are steps up from the garage to the, to the house. So the garage does not have to be, it's, it's at a lower level than the house. It can be at another foot or so lower so that the grade does not have to be raised there. But the grace is, grade is being raised two and a half feet. And I believe it's limited on how far you can actually put that fill in and it has to go down to existing grade. And I, I can't remember off the top of my head how much that is, is if it's five feet off, maybe Ally can refresh my memory associated with that.
Ten feet.
Ten feet. So the, this, the driveway is about 65 feet long. So we can take a look at that and say it's 1/6 the length. So it's before you get to the, to the proposed infiltration basin is where it would have to match, match grade again. And then, and it, and it doesn't, all right? There, the contours that they're showing for proposed are showing that it's well past that point. So you're, you're filling just about every area. And, and then the other thing is, is this is in the flood zone. I sent a map off to Ally, the entire site is within the flood zone AE 11. So...
That's correct.
So therefore, this entire site falls underneath what we call the Conservancy District. And that means you're expanding the driveway and you're putting an impervious material in here. If you just put the driveway between Strong Island Road to the garage and that's it, you'd be fine because that's a reduction in the square footage. But when you put the turnaround in there, that, that essentially kicked it up to over 2,000 square feet. So I, I think you have to look at square footage reduction and I think you have to take a look at elevation adjustments and, and go with pervious material. And I think you're fine. You can get it, but not the way it's proposed.
Okay. Thank you, Arthur. So Tom, you've finished your comment. I'll move on to Bob Wirtshafter. Is that where we are now?
Madam Chair, Tom Gagin, yes, I have. Thank you.
All right. Bob Wirtshafter, questions or comments for Mr. Riley?
Yeah. I, I have to say that I'm in no position to be able to make a comment because the maps that are produced here are unreadable to me.
Yeah, I agree.
And I can't tell, they're too small. I can't read any of the writing. I can't see any of the existing lines. And so I'm frankly going to have to vote no, just because I can't make it, I can't see anything.
Thanks, Bob. And yes, I was in the same position. It was very difficult to see what is going on in these maps. And, and Arthur, I thank you for deciphering it.
I, I scanned and blew it up 300%. That's the only way I could read it.
Great. Good.
If I could be, if I could be heard on that, on that issue, we file 12 copies with the zoning board. We filed 12 copies with the Conservation Commission. And so the fact that the town staff can't get you full-size copies when they have a full-size copy machine in their office is not something that should be weighted against the applicant.
Okay. All right. Um, so Bob Dubus, questions?
Bob Dubus here. I, we just went through a pile of material in the maps, or I should say, the maps, the plans were, were in large detail for us to read. I, and I understand where Bill's coming from. They put out 12 copies here and 12 copies there that, that they could have, could have at least presented one or something. Because as many plans as I can read, this is very difficult to read without a microscope or really squint my eyes down. And for something this delicate, we should have had at least halfway decent copy so we could understand what was going on. This is where I, I will give Thad credit that he does use a little color in his plan so you can detail it. The other thing is, they do make impervious asphalt if you want it asphalt that bad.
You, do you mean pervious asphalt, Bob?
Yeah, pervious, sorry. Sorry.
Yes. Okay. And Roger Griffin? Comments, questions?
I don't really, well, I don't have any questions. I guess my comments, I guess I pretty much agree with Art. I guess I was kind of concerned that the total project is pretty in the flood zone. And I think that I would wish we could find some way to really use pervious materials for the driveway because whether it's Shell Drive or whether it is Strong Island Road, I think we have to start looking for, I think we should, I wouldn't, you know, this is a referral, but I think it's the way we go. And I think when I saw that pavement, I think it, I'm concerned. So I guess, I guess I can't, I don't know, I'm not comfortable with it. But anyway, those are my comments.
So, Arthur, excuse me, Mr. Arthur, your hand is raised. Is that from before or did you have a comment?
I forgot to shut it down. I just did. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Riley, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. I mean, the, the fascination with pervious materials has always been a mystery to me in the 40-something years that I've been practicing here. I mean, the, if the goal of requiring pervious material is to have the stormwater recharge to the groundwater, the, the reality is that having a paved surface, having a paved surface with leaching, with drains and leaching pits is a much more effective method for getting the, getting the stormwater from, from this surface there and into the groundwater than having it land on the, on the, you know, Shell Drive or something else where some percentage of the, of the, of the rain is going to be evaporated and, and some will be taken up by adjacent grassy surfaces. So the, other than the fact that the members feel that they're doing the good things for the environment by demanding, you know, pervious surfaces, I just wonder what, what's the goal of the pervious surface?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Riley. I think that is the way our bylaws are currently written, so...
No, there's no bylaw that deals with pervious or impervious surfaces.
Permeable material. So at this point, I'm gonna suggest, I may suggest to the board that there's several issues with particular maps that we would vote to send a negative recommendation to the zoning board of appeals because it does appear that fill is being used. It appears that there's a driveway expansion and also impervious materials are being used. So those are the issues with this matter. So if the board is in agreement with that course of action, I would ask for a motion that we could not recommend this to the zoning board of appeals. We'd have to send a negative recommendation. And may I have a motion to that effect?
Art Spru, I'll make that motion.
And do I have a second?
Roger Griffin will second, Roger Griffin will second that motion.
All right. So let's do our roll call vote. Art Spru?
All right. Art Spru, I approve the negative recommendation.
All right. Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, ditto.
Bob Wirtshafter?
Bob Wirtshafter, ditto.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus, the same.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, ditto. Ditto.
Okay. And I'll just, I'll just reiterate that those who have said ditto approve the negative recommendation. And this is Catherine. I also approve that we must send a negative recommendation to the zoning board of appeals regarding 146 Strong Island Road. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Riley. So now we will go on. Before we adjourn, just a couple of comments. Again, great work on January 24th. And there are, therefore, as you may know, four public hearings that we will hold at the special, we're having a special meeting on March 7th that will start at 5:30. And there will be four public hearings regarding all of the articles that the planning board is sponsoring that will be on the warrant for annual town meeting. Those were brought before, Ally brought them before the Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen will send them back. We will hold public hearings on March 7th. And that, or the proposed amendments to the zoning bylaws for the ADUs, also for the, the requirements, the required changes for the floodplain bylaw, the housekeeping sheds, and then also the proposed bylaw amendment that the historic commission has been working on to offer incentives for the preservation of historic structures. So we'll be doing that on March 7th, beginning at 5:30. We probably will also now have the February 28th meeting. Ally will keep us updated on that. And then after that, our next meeting is March 14th, which will start at 5 o'clock. One other matter that Ally and I would like to bring up to the board for your consideration is regarding the preparation of our packets for each meeting. Used to be, some years ago, that the packets for a board meeting, say on a Tuesday, would be available on the Friday before that Tuesday. Now we're making them available two Fridays before the Monday of our meeting. So because a, a couple of years ago, some board members wanted more time to review the packet. However, there are some issues coming up with the preparation of the packets that make it pretty difficult to get full information into the packet that early. So I think what Ally wishes to propose is that the packets could be ready on the Wednesday before the Monday. So you'd still have five full days to review the packet. And maybe Ally, if you'd like to go into any more details about that request.
Thank you. Yeah, so it really started with putting A and Rs into the packet. We can get an A and R at any time and we are required within 21 days to hear or review the A and R proposal. And so almost always the A and Rs, you know, come in inadvertently after the packets have come out. And so they're just not able to be included. In addition, just based upon staff time, it is difficult for me to get the packets out so far in advance. So I'm just hoping that the board could maybe consider having the packets go out the Wednesday before, as Catherine said. But happy to discuss this further with you. I'm just, you know, hoping to get a little bit more time to be able to prepare the packet. And if the Wednesday doesn't work, we can always talk about a different day if it's, you know, okay with the board. And if the Wednesday doesn't work, we can always talk about a different day if it's, you know, okay with the board.
So any comments from board members? So instead of two Fridays before the Monday, it would be the Wednesday before the Monday. So there'd still be the full weekend and five days to review the packet, make any site visits. So the question just is, would this work or do we need to consider something else? Any comments from the board? Any discussion? I'll just open it up.
Well, Bob Dubus here. Why don't we try and see how it works?
Okay.
I understand the pressure.
Yeah. Any other comments or questions?
Art Spru, that's fine with me.
Okay, and Bob Wurchafter?
Yeah, I, I think Friday, Wednesday is fine. But is there any possibility of providing this as an electronic document? This would have eliminated the issue with the, the size of the, of the document. It would save an awful lot of paper and printing. And, and you could probably make it available even quicker than having to, to copy everything. So I would, I would encourage you to try and make an electronic version. I would be very happy to have that.
Sure, we do have to make electronic copies anyway because we post everything on the town's website, my town government, for the public to view because we are virtual now. So we do have those electronic copies available. And if you would rather that, we would be happy to send that to you.
Put me on that list.
Okay.
Um, so I get the sense of the board that we're willing to try having the packets available the Wednesday before the Monday. Ally, do we need to take a formal vote? Yeah?
No, I don't think so. Just as long as the board members are okay with trying this, I would be grateful for that. So thank you.
All right. And then if you can let Ally know if electronic copies are adequate or if you need a hard copy, then maybe not, maybe we don't need to provide hard copies for everybody. And Bob Dubus has his hand raised.
Bob Dubus would like a hard copy, please.
Yeah, and Catherine would like a hard copy. It's just easier for me to see things while we're talking. Um, any other comments?
Just a quick question for Bob W. So do you want a hard copy at all or would you rather just have electronic?
As long as we're remote, I have bigger, I have a very large monitor here that would be much easier to work with than it is the paper. So I would, I do not want a paper copy.
Okay, great.
Right, great. So if the board agrees, we'll try, and Ally, you're all set. We'll try the Wednesday before the Monday and see if that gives the board enough time to review everything. And it will help you out in terms of what you need to get prepared. So we'll go with that. Um, great, thank you, Ally. And the other, the only other thing in your packet is this client advisory regarding a new interpretation of the exception for public body quorums attending a meeting of another public body. And I think in a nutshell, it just means that we have to, if we as a board meet with another board, we have to post that publicly in advance. And I think this has been our practice so far. So, but it's just a refinement of that understanding. You can read it through. Were there any questions or discussions on that?
Yeah, my understanding is that it doesn't have, if three of us showed up at the select board meeting, we could not sit together and we could not discuss anything. It, it doesn't have to be a, a formal visit. It just, it could be just, you know, circumstances that we're all there. So we cannot deliberate at another meeting even if we had, you know, even if we didn't come intending to do that.
Yeah, that's correct. And I think that's also been our practice for all the years that I've been on the board that if, if we show, if we all happen to show up at a meeting, we cannot sit together and we cannot deliberate or discuss anything. Tom, you had your hand raised as well?
Yes, Madam Chair, Tom Gagin. The, the planning board, at least this member of the planning board has requested of the airport commissioners to attend our meetings, all of the members of the airport commission. And if I remember, a response from the chair was that he felt that that would be a violation of the open meeting bylaw. I'm not in agreement with that. So if the runway protection zone overlay district is going to be a subject for this board to discuss in the future, I would really like to encourage through the planning board that we have access to the seven members. They certainly could put out a public response to that notification. And then we would be able to have seven members of the planning board talking with seven members of the airport commission. Is that a reasonable request?
Um, Mr. Gagin, this is Catherine. I'll reply. Again, it would just need to be posted. It would need to be duly posted if the entire airport commission were to join us. So it certainly is possible to do it that way. It's, I think we will, as I understand where we are in that process, the airport commission is preparing a draft of zoning for the runway protection zone that they will bring, that they have submitted. And Ally, please correct me if I'm wrong on any of these points, that they have submitted to the Board of Selectmen, which will come back to the planning board to hold a public hearing to consider their proposal. And certainly at that public, we can request that the airport commission be present and that can be done. Our role in this is, the airport commission is the one putting forth this proposed zoning bylaw amendment. The planning board's role would be to hold the public hearing and then either to recommend or not recommend the proposed zoning amendment to annual town meeting. Ally, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I just, I believe that the airport commission did consider a proposed bylaw and they did vote to send it to the select board. So, but other than that, I agree with everything that you said.
All right, so that's, that's part of that process. And I see both Arthur and Tom have their hands raised. Arthur, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, just help me clarify the past discussion that we had with the airport commission, the chair.
Yeah.
I thought that they were supposed to bring forward some information to us so that we could have a dialogue about this and understand some of the aspects of what they were looking for. I don't recall us saying draft a bylaw, don't show it to us, go directly to the Board of Selectmen. And then we, the only input that we had is at the public hearing. Even when petitions come before us, the petitioners have been courteous enough to actually come forward, seek our input, make some adjustments and changes before they actually submit it to, for a formal public hearing. I don't understand why that process isn't being used in here to the point that we have no input at all about this and how it, how it overlays and deals with what we're doing on the West Chatham England Center. So am I misunderstanding what we had discussed with them? Or does somebody else have a different view on, on what I heard?
So this is Catherine, Arthur. I'll reply that, if I may, that my understanding was more in accord with what you've said. I had understood that we were planning another meeting with the airport commission and to include also their consultant, Matt Karen, their FAA consultant, and town council so that we could, and we had many questions that still needed to be answered. And I had understood that, that they were going to come back to us and we were going to have at least one additional meeting where we could discuss all of these issues and questions and get clarification and have more of a conversation. So I did understand that was to happen. But it perhaps, and may I suggest, just perhaps due to the timing involved, it has not happened, it's not happening that way. As you know, there's a kind of a tight schedule to get things on the warrant for annual town meeting in May. And I'll just suggest that possibly due to the tight timing, they simply went to draft what they want to propose and that, you know, then they brought it to the Board of Selectmen. It basically had to go to the Board of Selectmen now in order to meet the schedule to get to annual town meeting in May. So, but to be honest, I don't really know the reason. My understanding was more similar to what you've said. We will have the opportunity at public hearing to vet some of those issues. I think Ally will do her best, as she always does, to be sure that the consultant is there and town council is there so that the issues can be properly vetted at that time. So I see also Tom Gagin has his hand raised.
Yes, Madam Chair, Tom Gagin. What has just been expressed by Arthur and explained by you means that once again, this planning board is going to be ignored. The tight timeframe kind of is predictable in that they're going to go to the nth degree of the 11th hour of the 11th hour and we're going to have any document in front of us to review. Also, what I hear being stated is that we have absolutely no power as this board to request the seven members, not just the chair, which has been consistent to our access to the, the commission, that the chair of the, of the airport commission doesn't have to invite his board members to meet with us. I don't understand that. So we're not involved. Has there been a document created by the runway protection zone overlay district? Is that document actually been published? And why don't we have a copy of it?
So Ally will, Ally will comment.
Sure, I believe that they, the airport commission reviewed a proposed bylaw at their last meeting. So I, I believe that it is, was public and was put on their website. I assume, I'd be happy to get it, to forward it to the planning board. But I also do believe that the select board is reviewing it tomorrow night as well at their meeting, which, you know, is obviously public.
Okay. And Ally, could you comment on Tom's request that, I mean, right now, this is already, the process has already gone forward. So say, for example, that we have a public hearing for this runway protection zone proposed bylaw that's been drafted by the airport commission and submitted to Board of Selectmen. Can we, can the planning board in any way require that the entire airport commission is present? That it's the meeting of the two boards?
So we can request that the airport commission in its entirety be there for a joint meeting. We have done that in the past. So we can request that. But again, we can request it. We can't require them.
Okay, and Tom, you have your hand again raised. Please go ahead.
If, if we request as a board so that we can educate ourselves to what the commission, the airport, entire airport commission is thinking and the logic behind any proposal for an overlay district, we make that request and that request is not adhered to, maybe not even formally denied by the chair. Is there any mechanism by which this board could not hear the arguments from the chair of the airport commission? Because it's just one person and not the entire commission?
I'll let Ally comment on that.
So I, I guess that the planning board could, if the chair does want to speak, although I'm going back and forth, it is the republic hearing. So it would be the public's right. And I guess he would be a public member to be able to speak. So I'm not sure if we can say, no, you can't speak. I'm not sure if that answered your question or not, Tom. Sorry.
No, I'm not, I'm not concerned about the ability of the airport commission, the whole commission to speak. But it's only, they're only speaking through one person, the chair. And my, my opinion is that that conversation is at best skewed or tainted. I would like to have input from the other members of the commission because I don't have any handle on what their logic is, what they're thinking, how they are justifying what they as a commission wish to do. And I don't think that's fair to the board. I'm not looking to grill anybody. I just want to be informed. And it seems that there's an effort, a concerted effort from the chair of the commission, the airport commission, to keep that information from us. If there's a document that's being suggested by the airport commission, why don't we have it now? Does the, does the planning board staff have a copy of this document? And if they do, shouldn't we be informed as early as possible so that we can independently of one another think about what is being proposed? Have a chance in our own minds to respond to what is good, bad, or indifferent? I just feel jammed up against the wall. And my response, when someone tells me to do something quickly, even in business, I run and I got very long legs. I don't, I don't allow anybody in a business context or in this board context to force me to make a decision quickly. I just don't think it's fair to the town. I don't think it's fair to the board members. And I'm really opposed to not having access to as much information as this board and these board members need to make a rational decision. That's my argument.
Hey, Ally has her hand up again. And Roger, I do see your hand is up as well. But let me let Ally go ahead.
Sure, um, so how the process usually plays out when bylaws get referred to the select board, we did this just with the historical commission, so that's why I'm familiar with the process, is that it goes from whatever commission or board that it originates from, they vote to refer it to the select board. The select board cannot vote to refer it to the planning board for a public hearing. Obviously, with the historical commission document, they did vote to do that. So as soon as the select board, and if they do, I'm not sure how it's going to go tomorrow night, obviously, at the select board. But as soon as they vote to forward the document to the planning board, I will immediately send that finalized, or not finalized, but that document to the board for review. We usually get it right away after they vote, the next day, usually. The town manager's office sends it to us.
Okay, thank you, Ally, for clarifying the procedure. And Roger, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I just think it, you know, we, we could, we'd be, we're, I, I can see what, what Tom's saying. But it all goes back to exactly what Art had said. And we thought, we, we thought that we were going to meet again for one reason. We will never be able to make the right decisions if we don't get answers. We don't get specific answers at the time we ask them or get the answers to the questions we have. Otherwise, it's this, it's not going anywhere. I mean, it's just, and that's, that's really, that's really simple. And I feel that we're not, if we really aren't going to have the information to do what we have to do, then we shouldn't be doing it at all. And I'd be, at the same token, I think we saw tonight, we're a board that can, that does work with people. I mean, even with 1218 Main Street. I mean, what, the way we started that meeting is not what we expected at the end. And the board really took that apart and put it back together. And we worked with those people till there was, we made a decision tonight. Maybe it wasn't what we thought we were going to do. We really found a way around it to get it done. And I really kind of thought, wow, what a great group of people. But, you know, and we can do this. But we have, as a board, whether it's you, me, or any board you want, the airport commission, we, we need that time to get to, like Art said, we have questions that need to be answered. And that's going to be, you know, and that's where it's at, that, that, and there's no. where it's at, that, and it, there's no good, bad, or it's not because of the, whatever feelings they're, it's just, I think that it, it's frustration. I think that's really what it, it's frustration. We're not getting the answers. That's it. Yeah. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Roger. This is Catherine. Yes, again, so, you know, I'll just reiterate, my understanding was the same as Arthur's. I thought we were going to have yet another meeting where we could have that conversation. But I think as Ally's clarified what the process is, um, what will happen is we'll need to use the public hearing to vet all of our questions and to get the information that we need. And what the process is, again, just a reminder is, this will be a, uh, proposed bylaw amendment that's being proposed by another town body. And basically, the planning board's function is either to recommend or not to recommend that to annual town meeting. So we have that option to not recommend it if we don't feel that, uh, we agree with it or if we feel we don't have the information we need to make a sound decision on it. Um, but that's where it stands at the moment. Um, Ally, do you have any other points that might clarify those issues?
No, um, I, I don't at this point. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. So, uh, that being said, if there's no other comments from board members or from the public, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Bob Dubus, move, move to adjourn.
Thank you, Bob. Could I add to that motion?
Uh, Wurchafter seconds.
All right. Art Spru?
Art Spru, approve.
Tom Gagin?
Tom Gagin, approve.
Bob Wurchafter?
Wurchafter, approve.
Bob Dubus?
Bob Dubus more than approves.
Roger Griffin?
Roger Griffin, approve.
And this is Catherine Halpern. I also approve that we adjourn the meeting and we can note the time as 7:58 PM. And again, thank you, Ally. Thank you, all board members. Thank you, members of the public for participating.